So I want to welcome everybody to this portion of the City Council Workshop. And at this time, we will recognize that Councilmember Lopez is not currently with us, but the other four councilmembers obviously are here. And next portion of the agenda is our annual federal legislation presentation. I think last year was on Zoom, if I'm correct, David. I think you did one last year, but that happened to be on Zoom or on the phone. That is fun, because as we know from past presentations, it's a pretty good show that David puts on along with Jamie. But more interesting, it gave us a pretty good perspective on how good or how bad things really are in Washington, D.C. And I suspect we'll hear more of that. But nevertheless, it's now time for the Dave and Jamie Show on the Federal Legislative Advocacy. And obviously, those who are in the public, both David and Jamie represent David Church and Associates, and they are the lobbyists that the City of Montclair has hired for federal legislation. So David, it's all yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and citizens of my favorite city, it's good to be here, and it's good to be here in person. I will tell you, as you know, I'm kind of a Luddite when it comes to technologies, so the Zoom stuff just doesn't work very well for me. I did, however, get a new camera. I will say it was roundly criticized by my COO, who said, one, we unnecessarily spent $30. I don't look that good. Anyway, the camera that was in the computer had worked just fine, so it was just a controversy within the firm. Good to be with you tonight. I think for the first time, in really a wonderful association with this city, I don't have anything that I can tell you that's definitive tonight. Washington is a dynamic place. Things change every five minutes, but not the way they are now. In the last 15 or 20 minutes, I've been on the phone with two calls, just trying to keep up what's happened since 5:00 this afternoon California time. So let me start with the single thing that is one of the obligations of the Congress every year, and that is to fund the executive branch of the government. Well, it's due not later than 12:01 of October 1st every year, and of course, we haven't done it. That bill is put off now in a continuing resolution until December 3rd. I'm going to come back to December 3rd again, because we're kind of having a witching time, where everything's going to blow up in early December, but I'll get to that in a little bit. The House has passed all 12 appropriations bills, and yes, the good news is, they contain earmarks. Now, we're calling them congressionally-directed funding or community development initiatives, depending on which body you're talking about. I still remember them as earmarks. That is good news for this community. We've been highly successful in the game of earmarks in Washington. The Senate has passed none of the appropriations bills. Three have been reported out of committee, and those bills also contain, if I can go back to the old phrase, earmarks. So at least that's one of the positive things that are happening. Again, the appropriations bills to fund the entire government's put off to December 3rd. We have the human infrastructure bill, about which you've heard so much. It's going to do, it really is fairly transformative for American society. It deserves a thorough debate and an understanding by the populace of what it's all about. It started out as a $6 trillion bill, and then it was reduced to 3.5 trillion, and then it was somewhere between 1.9 and 2.1 trillion. I think the current number talking about today is 1.75 trillion, but even 1.75 trillion dollars is an amazing amount of money. That bill, because of the progressive caucus of the Democrats in the House, is going to be considered only in parallel with the hard infrastructure bill. So we don't know yet where the human infrastructure bill goes. I listened to Senator Manchin. One of the difficulties, we not only have difficulties getting these bills passed in the House, we have them in the Senate as well. There are two holdouts in the Democratic Caucus. We're not sure exactly what their bottom line is for acceptance of the bills, but it's pretty much dependent on them, because there's no margin for error. The Dems need every vote they have in the U.S. Senate, barring none. They can't afford to lose even one bill. I listened to Senator Manchin earlier this morning. He said he had some trepidation about the human infrastructure bill, and he wanted to see the text. I've been in Washington a long time. We reach agreement on these bills. We reach them in substance. We know what they're going to contain. I don't care if you change "the" to "the," it doesn't matter. I think what he is doing is he's waiting for the CBO, Congressional Budget Office, to score the legislation. This is a statutory requirement. On the federal level, there is a group, the CBO, that scores every bill for its cost to the American taxpayer. Everyone must accept the verdict of the CBO. This isn't optional, and you can debate it. When the CBO comes out and says, "The cost to the taxpayer is 3.5 trillion," well, it's 3.5 trillion. The President has to accept it. Every agency of the federal government has to accept it, and everyone in the U.S. Congress has to accept it. Maybe he's waiting for the scoring, and Senema may be waiting for the scoring to see exactly what the cost is, and then raise some objections. Senator Manchin this morning said, "Well, if you cut the time for some programs, this is a way to remain under the limit for reconciliation bill." Remember, there can only be one. This is a reconciliation bill. There can only be one every year. How come they get two this year? Well, because the Republicans didn't pass a budget last year, so they get two bites at the apple. End of the story is, there are a lot of very peculiar requirements for reconciliation bill. They have to deal directly with the budget. They have to deal directly with revenues, and they have to deal directly with expenditures. And you have to formulate all the programs so they meet that criteria. And now it's not the CBO, it's the Senate parliamentarian that gets to determine whether or not the provisions of that bill meet the requirements, the BIRD requirements, if you will, or not. Human infrastructure bill, well, it was tied in with the hard infrastructure bill. Americans seem to want, I mean, when I go around the country, they just want better roads. They want safe water. They want an increase in broadband. It's a universal want. We passed a bipartisan bill in the Senate with 16 Republicans voting for it. That bill is now over to the House, but it won't be considered, because the progressive caucus of the Democrats want both bills to be tied together. They feel that their leverage really for the human infrastructure bill is to tie it very directly to the hard infrastructure bill. You know, folks, the current governor of Michigan ran on the slogan, this is true, "Fix the damn roads," and she got elected. I think now there is a possibility that we will not see either of those bills actually come to fruition. This afternoon, we had hoped, despite Senator Manchin's conference this morning, that we'd be taking up a vote on both of the bills tomorrow in the House. Now, remember, on the hard infrastructure bill, it's passed the Senate. It will not be amended in the House, so the vote is up or down. If all the Democrats vote for it, it passes. It goes directly to the President for signature. The human infrastructure bill, however, will come out of the House, has to go to the Senate, maybe back to the House for revision, I don't know, and then go to the President. But the hard infrastructure bill is ready to go, and it has been for months. We're thinking at the moment that because Speaker Pelosi says you can have 72 hours to read every bill, that the earliest we're going to have consideration now of these bills is November 11th, maybe, some days subsequent to that. I had one estimate earlier this evening that maybe around Thanksgiving. But I think where we are right now in Washington is, we are in some danger of losing both pieces of legislation. There has to be some give at some point. Well, I didn't talk about the debt, because the debt's going to come up. When? December 3rd. It's kind of the triple witching day, when we're going to talk about appropriations, and we may be talking about the human infrastructure bill, and we may be talking about the hard infrastructure bill, and we may be talking about the national debt. I can hardly wait for December 3rd to roll around. The one thing I want to remind, and you've heard me say this so often, it's when I put on my hat as an economist, to tell you that the federal debt is not like the debt that's incurred by citizens of this community or you and I. It's a different animal. And the thing to pay attention to is not the big number at the top, because the big number at the top is fairly meaningless. It's debt service. And debt service is primarily a transfer payment from some Americans to other Americans. And usually, that's, let's say it's from maybe the middle class to people who have more money, because they're the people who can afford to buy Treasury bonds and Treasury bills, where the minimums can be 50, or 100, or $250,000, just to buy the piece of paper. It's not like the savings certificate you think you buy down at the local. In any event, it's money that we owe ourselves. I will give you one example, which is that, as you well know, because you've heard me pontificate about it for years, we don't fund all of the transportation projects with the gas tax. We're short by tens of millions of dollars every year, so how do we fund those? Well, the Transportation Department goes to the U.S. Treasury, and they borrow the amount of money that was authorized to build whatever came under, now we're under the FAST Act, whatever came under the FAST Act, and that's part of the national debt. But it's one federal department owing another federal department. And that's a substantial, when I looked some years back, that was almost a third of our federal debt. So the answer is, we want to think about the debt. It's going, there are a lot of political points to be made, but that will come due again on December 3rd, and after that, then Secretary Yellen will start moving the shell game around. Then it becomes a cash flow problem. At what point can we not pay, for instance, social security checks? Well, it depends on what the receipts are from the day before, so we can pay the money out the next day. Usually, we can go some weeks, maybe a couple of months, but we'll just see. In any event, they all come together December 3rd. I wish I had something I could tell you that was more definitive tonight, and to say, "This is what's going to happen, and this is the time when it's going to happen." It's the first time you've allowed me to appear before you went, folks, I just don't have any answers. Now, Mr. Jones may have many more answers, so let's set him up for some definitive pronouncements. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. David gave you sort of a macro perspective, an overview of what's happening in Washington, and I'll burrow down on some of the more specific issues that relate to city priorities. I'll start off with the FY22 appropriations status. The congressional call for projects earlier this year was condensed into a period of two weeks, or three weeks. This process would normally take over two months to complete. Montclair staff was highly responsive to members' requests for project information. That's not just from Torres, but from Padilla's office and Feinstein's office. Your city staff did a remarkable job under very tight deadlines, so they deserve a lot of kudos for that. Montclair project funding requests for the FY22 appropriations cycle included the Saratoga Park Improvements Project. Rep. Norma Torres secured $2 million for the project, listed as a line item under the Economic Development Initiative account administered by the Housing and Urban Development Department. The House passed the bill that included the earmark, which is the T-HUD bill, with the park funding this summer. And that bill is pending in the Senate. As David alluded to, Senate appropriation, folks, have not marked up any of their bills yet. There have been an issue regarding funding caps for their appropriation bills, as well as different or conflict positions regarding how much to increase defense budget and domestic budget. That's being negotiated now, and we hope that both the senators and House members will be able to complete an agreement by December 3rd, allowing for the consolidated appropriations bill, or an omnibus appropriation bill, to move forward with the community project fundings, which we call earmarks, but apparently, we're not supposed to say that anymore. And that would be very good news, because then the funding for the park, the $2 million would be included in that. But we're monitoring that closely, and we'll keep you apprised of new developments. Another issue is the Central Avenue Bridge replacement. Is another Montclair project that was submitted for funding by Senator Alex Padilla in the Transportation HUD appropriations bill, and by Representative Torres, who submitted the project for consideration in the FAST Act reauthorization bill, which the House passed as the Investment in America Act this past summer. As you know, the Central Avenue Bridge is structurally deficient, with a Caltrans Bridge health rating of poor, and therefore, needs to be replaced. While funding for this project was not included in the congressional bills, Rep. Torres and Senator Padilla targeted the $1 trillion Senate bipartisan infrastructure bill, which the House may pass at some point, hopefully sooner than later. That should provide us with new and additional funding streams for both the bridge replacement and the acquisition and development of the transcenter parking areas, which will allow for affordable housing development in the North Park parking lot, and the construction of a multi-level garage or garages south of the tracks. The FY23 appropriations cycle is going to start early next year, even though Congress has not completed the FY22 appropriations process. Our fiscal year, the fiscal year for the federal government began on October 1st, and, you know, if they don't complete their budget process until sometime in December, that's certainly well into the first quarter. But we need to begin, so even though the fiscal year '22 budget has not been adopted, it is unlikely to be passed until sometime in December, as I mentioned, we must begin to discuss, compile, and review a tentative city project list for congressionally submitted projects early next year. City projects should be ready to submit by the end of January 2022. I will be working with city staff in that process to ensure Montclair is in a strong position to take advantage of the FY23 community project funding opportunities that will present themselves. I will coordinate closely with city staff under council guidance in developing and fine-tuning the city's federal priorities. On the Gold Line Extension, another important issue for the city, we will continue to work with Representative Torres in securing legislative language to allow the FTA to waive National Environmental Policy Act requirements when a comparable state environmental review has been completed. And in your case, it's SEQA, and SEQA is certainly comparable to NEPA. Current law streamlines the NEPA process. However, that must be done concurrently with the state environmental review process, which was not completed as part of the Gold Line Extension project. I must admit that with all the ups and downs in getting the Gold Line to Montclair, this project feels more like a roller coaster than a light rail system. And then, you know, I think that these are issues that we're going to have to work with. I think I would recommend the councilmembers to think about coming to Washington, to talk to congressional members, not just your own delegation, but members who have been very supportive of the Gold Line Extension, you know, in the San Gabriel Valley, people like Adam Schiff, Judy Chu, you know, Grace Napolitano. I think those members are vested in this project and would like to see it to fruition. I think there are other issues, I think, that we can deal with, with agencies. At the moment, agencies are not meeting in person, but we think that may change, hopefully, in January. We'll have to see how that plays out. Right now, they're doing mostly Zoom meetings. Some members do meet in person, and other members do not. It's, you know, depending on each office runs differently. But we think that as the country gets back to more normal setting, that we'll see Washington open up more, and you'll see some of these conferences, like the U.S. Conference of Mayors that begins in January. We'll see how that plays out. But there are other, many other conferences involving municipalities and counties and states that take place in Washington in the first, you know, two, three months of the year. And I think that if Congress continues to move forward with earmarks, or community-funded projects, or project funding, or congressionally-designated funding, as the senators like to call it, it would behoove the city to, I think, come earlier next year than later. And we can coordinate a time when that would work best for you. So that's my update, as far as projects and congressional appropriations and issues that we've been working on. And other things, by the way, and I should say one other thing, we are working with the Department of Treasury to assist the city in determining how to spend its ARPA funding, what types of eligible projects you can spend that money. So a final rule is expected shortly. You know, what we've been told through conversations with the Department of Treasury is that they are advising municipalities to, if they so choose to move forward with eligible projects under the interim final rule. And if there is a change in the final rule that either modifies or eliminates that type of activity, they will abide by, and they will honor, the projects that have been moving forward under the interim final rule. So they made that clear. They want this money spent. They want cities and states to obligate this funding as soon as possible. And hopefully, this final rule, if it comes out soon, and we expect it to, will allow most communities to do that, because I think most communities are waiting for the final rule to come out.
Okay. Well, great, Jamie. And I would say, I mean, I go backwards, as we're talking about the funds that the city's holding on to right now from the federal government, and that, and I suspect that when we have the final rulings, we'll have a workshop regarding that issue too. I know one of the things that has brought to my attention is to have some fundings available to assist our local businesses, but we'll get to that at a later date. And I will say this, the project you mentioned, the MetroLink project, obviously is very important, along with Central Avenue, and the $2 million for Saratoga Park, I think that's a focus of what the city should continue on, this through his next congressional legislation period. And as far as this going to Sacramento, Washington, D.C., just let us know when the best time. Hopefully, the spring is, an opportunity pops up this spring, and we'll be able to be out there.
That'd be great.
So with that, I'll start with Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Paul Timbukul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, I concur with you on saying the efforts put forward by Congressmember Torres on the Gold Line. And I know she's worked closely with others who represent Gold Line areas, such as, you mentioned, Congressmember Schiff. I know Congressmember Napolitano, Congressmember Chu as well. They all want this to go to Montclair. And whenever I see them, even in my professional life, and lately, it's been on Zoom, they always mention how the Gold Line to Montclair is key to the rest of the San Gabriel Valley, and certainly, as Congressmember Torres has said, at some point, key to getting something to the Ontario Airport. So I think that's important. It is good, when you mentioned about going back there, because I think we need to thank them personally. I've sent a note to Congressmember Torres, thank her for the Gold Line and for the upgrades at Saratoga Park for our ballfields. I've also called her to thank her. She's a responsible representative. She understands this community rather well, and that should be applauded. I think, looking down the line for January, and you can work with staff on this, are there some, and I know we have limited time, but are there some specific parameters that the city should be looking at for January? Some specific that you may think, that you think might resonate? Of course, it will be an election year, so Congress may be looking at something very different.
That's right. No, I mean, I'm assuming you're talking about coming out, maybe during January. You know, January, usually the start is, I would say, the U.S. Conference of Mayors usually is the third week in January, when they hold their conference. And then after that, there are just a series of conferences, you know, one after the other, sometimes overlapping, and it gets quite intense. You know, I would suggest, my recommendation is always, if you're going to do something with the U.S. Conference of Mayors or the National League of Cities, is to give us time either before or after the conference is complete, so that we can do activities that are specific to the city of Montclair. What happens sometimes is that you have a lot of elected officials descending on Capitol Hill at the same time, when you have these conferences.
And maybe we go at a time when they're not all going to be there. Maybe we carve out that time. We've done that in the past, and it's been rather successful.
And I would, thank you for mentioning that, Councilmember. I would suggest that that might be, also, we advise that, because then members are not going from meeting to meeting to meeting with local elected officials.
And it's the revolving door of elected officials.
Exactly. I mean, I won't say who says this, but the National League of Cities, when I was a staff member eons ago, they used to call it the plague of cities, because the National League of Cities would come, and you have 10,000 elected officials, and members would be, literally, that's all they would do. They would have meetings back to back. But we would suggest that if you could pick a time, and I will forward some times, that we want to make sure that Congress is in session, and then forward that to your staff, and you can let us know, we can identify certain timelines that would be appropriate, and you let us know what works best for the council and for the staff.
Thank you.
And I will say that my preference is to go there at Onanga, National League of Cities Conference, just for what you just said. When we've gone there, we're there two full days. We're going from one office to another office. There's no competition with other city councilmembers. You get the congressional members' attention. So I think, again, if we go out there, you know, March, April, I think one of those two months is probably the best month, in my opinion. Plus, we'll know what Gold Line, if the state's going to fund the Gold Line. I mean, I don't know if they're going to take the surplus funds, as they contemplated back in September, and then have that discussion again perhaps early next year, you know, we'll see. But at least, if we go March and April, we'll get a little better idea where the Gold Line funding is on the state side.
That would work well, Mr. Mayor, because that goes and falls into the appropriations cycle as far as the community project funding request, because those are front-loaded. That means that by the end of January, we had, the city would have to be ready to move forward in submitting projects. Usually, sometime third or fourth week, and usually, third week in February, House members start putting calls for projects, and then senators start putting calls for projects in around second or third week in March. So it's a good time to come at that time, because they're still deliberating, still trying to vet these projects and make determinations on what projects they want to move forward with the committees.
You know, a question on the Gold Line. So if the infrastructure bill's adopted, that takes place before the year's over, let's just say, and Congressman Torres wants money for Gold Line, the whole issue is NEPA, that's got to be addressed. She'll have an opportunity, after the legislation is adopted, the funding is approved, to come back later with the bill, or with a, I don't know, what do they call them? A trailer bill, that's what they call in Sacramento. call it, the trailer bill, that's what they call it in Sacramento, to appropriate portions of the infrastructure for the Gold Line project?
Normally, on something the size of, you know, I think you're not including the Montclair section, which you have funding for, I think you're in a ballpark of $570 million, but that was before the issue of having to rebid the extension, which, my understanding, could add additional funding.
Perhaps $200 million more.
Perhaps up to $200 million. On something as large as that, usually you're talking about a full funding grant agreement with the FTA. That's something that does take some time to put together, but we would certainly be working not only with Torres's office, but the FTA. One of the issues that we've, the challenges that we've had to deal with, is that you've had the Gold Line Construction Authority that has been in a position where it was not able to compete or request funding at the federal level for this project, at least the extension from Pomona to Montclair. And that position has changed recently. So, you know, one of the issues that we have confronted in Washington, and I'm sure you've heard it from some members here, is that, you know, when you, when the city of Montclair speaks on behalf of the Gold Line and Construction Authority, well, on behalf of the Gold Line Extension, the question that comes up, particularly from the FTA, but from other committee folks as well, is what is the position of the Gold Line Construction Authority? And until this point, we've been in sort of a bind. That is no longer the case, so I think we now have a unified position, I hope.
It's not the Gold Line Construction Authority, it's what's the position of L.A. Metro.
Well, L.A. Metro, exactly, that's right. I mean, but L.A. Metro, exactly.
Yeah. The Gold Line will take their authority from L.A. Metro.
That's exactly right, yeah.
So, again, that's another question, that I think if it's March and April, we'll have an opportunity to figure that part as well, because I'm hoping that if the state is not going to fund Gold Line, the L.A. Metro will take a position, perhaps we need to look at a federal authorization. So which, and then, of course, if I was a member of Congress and I wanted the project to be funded, I would assume that especially the ones that have L.A. County in their jurisdiction are going to tell L.A. Metro, "Hey, you need to fund this project here." So that'd be a nice conversation to have with, not just with Congressman Torres, but obviously Judy Chu and Grace Napolitano, Adam Schiff, they're probably the four key members to find that out.
But that's, I mean, I think you've hit the nail on the head. You really have to have L.A. Metro on board if you're going to be going to Washington, asking for a sizable. And the other issue, really, that I think we all need to consider is, the FTA is going to favorably consider requests that have a fairly large local match in the vicinity of at least around 50%. So the question is, is there a way for the, for L.A. Metro to come up with around 50% of whatever the outstanding balance is to complete the project?
Yeah.
And that could come from the state or come from other sources.
The state of California wants to come up to 50%.
Oh, that's right, that's it.
All right. With the Olympics on deck, this is something that may move L.A. Metro to at least consider something, because they are looking at a lot of cars all moving into those Olympic venue sites.
Yes.
Although Montclair wouldn't be completed, it certainly might behoove them to support this because of the future.
That's right. And I think the Olympics is another issue that plays in your favor.
Yeah. They need this to be completed, or at least look like it's going to be completed.
Yeah. Okay. I think I've talked enough. David's standing in the background. You want to say something, David? Or he's stretching his legs out?
No, no, he wants, he's El Jefe, so he can come up here and ask, answer all the tough questions you're going to ask him.
Okay. All right. So, let me see, anybody on my left, have any questions to ask? You know, this is an interesting, you know, come on, this is a little government over here, and, go ahead.
I don't have any questions to ask, but I do want to thank you for how hard you're working for the city of Montclair. We appreciate you, and we appreciate all the work that you're helping us to do. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and I thank you for the opportunity to work with you and your staff and the citizens in Montclair. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody on my right? Have anything to say? So I think, again, we are going to pinpoint on Central Avenue and the Gold Line, Saratoga Park, and of course, I heard of, the fourth project that was mentioned is the parking structure there, next to the MetroLink station. So again, I appreciate you both being here. I don't know if Mr. Starr has any final comments, or Dave, or Mr. Church has any final comments? Interesting story, you know, some history.
Unusually, I'm at a loss for words.
Okay. All right. So since I'm not hearing from anybody else, we'll adjourn this portion of the workshop, and we'll be back for the 7 o'clock city council meeting. Thanks.